I had to give him thirty seconds.
Does he flash a flashlight in here or something? We're ready.
Good evening and welcome to the 2000 Missoula County Commissioner Candidates Forum. This evening's forum is sponsored by the Missoula League of Women Voters and Youth Vote 2000. The League of Women Voters promotes nonpartisan voter services and voter education. Youth Vote 2000 is the largest nationwide nonpartisan coalition in history dedicated to increasing the civic engagement of voters between the ages of eighteen and thirty. My name is Melissa Wangler. I'm the Montana Youth Vote 2000 Coordinator and I will be moderating this evening's forum. Our forum will be broadcast on Montana Community Access Television at ten thirty a.m. on Friday, October thirteenth, and at eight thirty p.m. on Saturday, October fourteenth. The filming of tonight's forum is made possible with MCAT's Media Assistance Grant Program. Before we introduce the candidates, I'd like to ask the audience to please hold all applause and demonstrations until the end of the forum. Both candidates for County Commissioner, Jean Curtis and Bill Farrell, are with us this evening. Prior to the forum, we tossed a coin to determine the order in which the candidates will speak. Candidates will answer questions in rotation. Our responses will be timed and I will inform candidates when time has expired. Both candidates will answer the same questions. Students at the University of Montana have had the opportunity to submit questions to members of the on-campus Youth Vote 2000 Coalition prior to the forum. All questions for this evening's forum will be asked by Youth Vote 2000 student representatives. Now let us turn to our candidates for County Commissioner. Each candidate has three minutes to make an opening statement about the most important issues Missoula County will face in the next year. Ms. Curtis won the coin toss. You have three minutes.
Thank you. The issues that I see will be the most important ones for Missoula County to face in the next year. Number one would be rebuilding the people's trust and confidence in local government. Number two would be using sound fiscal management to rebuild our reserves, our cash reserves. Number three would be to continue planning for growth. Number four, meeting the housing needs. People in this community have trouble affording housing on the average wage in the county. Number five, being proactive at the legislative level to stop the shift of the tax burden. Number six would be to develop our technology potential. And the last one would be to address environmental issues like the super fund cleanups, the weeds, and our air quality. The reason I feel it's important to rebuild the trust and confidence in the people that the people have in local government is we had a tough time this spring balancing the budget. There were things that were threatened to be cut. I think people lost confidence in what we had been doing. So we need to make sure that we use sound fiscal management practices and remember that the tax, it's the taxpayers' checkbook. We need to model responsible, accountable leadership. We need to find ways to be more effective and more efficient. Effectiveness is doing the right things, but efficiency is doing things right, and so we need to look at that. We also need to improve communication with the public on the issues. We sometimes get press that says what the issue is, but we don't always tell them what happened, what was decided. We need to plan for continued growth. This county is growing. We can't put gates up. We can't stop it. So we must plan for it. We need to adopt Phase One of the zoning changes, the ones that affect subdivisions, with input for the county. Those will allow for predictability. We need to recognize the values of each community in the county and allow diversity in density, for example. We need to adopt the plans that have been developed for areas like Lolo and Y to Mullen. We also need to work on developing our technology potential. We have just purchased, the county has just purchased several different computer programs that should help us to be more efficient and help us to work towards e-government. So that's one of the things we need to do, and some of the other things I'll address later. Thanks.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Farrell, your opening statement.
Well, I think the number-one issue for Missoula County has been the same that it's been for the last ten years, and that's the economy. Under I-105, the revenues that the county can generate have been frozen since nineteen eighty-seven. For those of you that don't remember, I-105 was the tax initiative passed by the people of the state of Montana that froze the mill levy, so that counties cannot assess mill levies without having a vote of the people. If the county commissioners would decide that they need more money, they have to put it to a vote of the people in the county, and I fully support that. I think that's the way that the county should go, because we need to involve the people. When you talk about trust and involving trust and getting people to trust government again, the only way you do that is by involving more people in the process. When it comes to planning, we need to get out in the communities and make certain that those communities are invited to participate in the planning. And planning is part of the growth pattern that Missoula and Missoula County are going to experience over the next few years. We're growing tremendously. We've seen Reserve Street Corridor, we've seen the Mullen Road Corridor all grow. All of those areas need to be planned for, and they need to have the public participation of those people that are there. One size does not fit all. Each community should be able to decide what they want in their area and have it zoned that way as long as it follows the state law, which governs all counties in the state of Montana. Many of the problems that have happened in the last five or six years is because the county commissioners had a personality conflict, I believe. I think it was basically nothing to do with doing what was great for the county or what the county needed done. I think it was because they could not get along, and they decided to allow the budget to go until it was at a crisis stage. That can't happen again. The county needs to have their budget managed day to day so that the planners and the department heads and the road department and all of those people know where we are and know what services we have to provide. Once we do that, I think I bring that to the office because of my years of serving in the Montana Legislature, my years of running my own business, my years of being a laborer, my years of working in the sawmills and the packing plants, and being able to identify with the folks that are here in Missoula County.
Now for our first question. You will each have two minutes to respond to all questions. Mr. Farrell, you will respond first to our opening question.
The County Office of Public Assistance is an important location for low-income families to access critical services, not only welfare, but Medicaid, food stamps, and childcare assistance. Montana People's Action has documented barriers that families face in accessing these services, such as limited office hours that are inaccessible to working parents and cumbersome applications and application processes. As County Commissioner, what moves, if any, would you take to remove these barriers?
Well, one of the things that I have in the past talked about is not just with public assistance in the county welfare office, but with motor vehicles and licensing and permitting and all of those, is that we've got to get more like what the rest of the community operates in. You can't continue to have public hearings at one-thirty in the afternoon when most people are working. If you expect people to be off of public assistance and you want them to get a job, then you've got to have the times for them to be able to come down to public assistance to apply and to get counseling and do all of the things that we provide over there. You've got to have them open until seven or eight o'clock at night. And if that means that somebody can't, doesn't come to work until noon, then that's what the county should be doing. We should be doing that in all kinds of services so that people have access. County commissioners maybe should be more in tune with what working couples and working families are doing. Those are the areas where I think that county commissioners, streamlining the process, I'm not sure about streamlining the process, because I'm not sure how much of the money is federally mandated to the welfare side, and I don't know what the feds require or what the state requires. I know the application process is cumbersome, but I'm not sure it's all county that requires all of that. I think there's some things that county commissioners don't have control over that require some of it.
Ms. Curtis?
Actually, the welfare office is a state-run office, and it's just moved from the, it's always been housed in a county building, which was the Health Department, and it's just moved to, unfortunately, a facility that's out of town a little ways or out of the downtown area. But the bus does run there. They have made sure that the bus routes go there. So the county commissioners wouldn't have a lot of control over that. But I do agree that we do need to make sure that we look at times that agencies like that are available for the people who need them, and we should address that. The way that we do that is called working relationship and partnerships. In other words, we can have that conversation with the state to make sure that something like that happens, or encourage them to.
Now for our second question.
Do you believe that businesses that receive county funds should be expected to pay their employees a living wage?
Ms. Curtis?
I believe that for, that the county and the city and the state should be modeling wages that are livable in our community, and if we are giving assistance to those businesses, we should expect them to do that. How we go about that, whether it's a community initiative like last time, or whether it comes from the government level, or whether we just find ways to talk to those people, I don't know. I know that conversation is going on again and that, and they're looking at those options. I think that if we are able to develop our economy here so that we have more jobs to choose from, that the labor force will actually drive those wages up too. So all of those things have part in making that decision.
Mr. Farrell?
Well, Jean, that's different than what you told us when we were at the Chamber of Commerce forum. You told us down there that you were in favor of the living wage initiative, and then you told us that at Realtors Forum. So that's just a difference that we have. I've always said that I'll follow state law. Whatever the state and the federal law is, that's what I will do. All of us want to pay living wages, but to mandate it at the county level or at the city level simply means that the businesses will locate someplace else if it's not in their best interest to pay the living wage. And most employers realize the value of their employees and do their best to hang on to them, but if the cost of doing business is raised and is higher because of a government mandate, those businesses have a choice of going someplace else. And our job as county commissioners is to promote economic development in Missoula County. If you can promote economic development and get enough jobs in here and create a shortage in the labor force, then businesses have to pay more to retain and hang on to the employees that they've got. Training costs are high, and no business wants to go through the retraining. So that's the way that county commissioners should look at developing job shortages is by making enough jobs available and inviting enough businesses here to make sure they have to pay.
Now for our third question.
Do you support alternative means of transportation for commuters from the Bitterroot Valley to Missoula? And if so, what types of alternative transportation would you promote?
Mr. Farrell?
Well, one of the things that I've discussed, have not talked to the people at Montana Rail Link yet. I know that in the past, when I was in the Legislature, that we were talking about putting a train on running from Lake Florence or down to Bitterroot into Missoula. I've did some thinking and talking about why don't we retrofit some of the buses that we have on Mountain Line or buy different buses and retrofit them to run on the Mountain Line track from here to Florence or from here to Lolo. There are van services now that are being funded by grants from, I think it's the federal government is funding them and some state money. I don't know if the county's involved in that. They're running, I think they, I saw an article where they had six or seven of them running from different areas outside. I think that's an area that we can explore. I don't know if Rail Link's agreeable to it, but I think it's some time to start the conversation. If those buses can run down there, we can develop places for them to stop, like at the mall or out by Kmart, and actually, they could come all the way in right here and go to the depot that we have over here by the courthouse. So you could bring commuters in, you could bring commuters out, they could run on an hourly or two times a day or three times a day. That's one of the ways that I think we can have alternative transportation for the Bitterroot.
Ms. Curtis?
Well, because I've been going to a lot of meetings and talking to a lot of people, I am aware that Mr. TMA is the name of the organization. It's the Missoula River Valley Transportation Management Association, I think is what the acronym stands for. But they do have, get county money. We do give them some money that allows them to then leverage other federal and state money, and that's how we have funded the vans in the past. I also know that MRL is willing to run a train down there. The conversation now is just how to, because there is nowhere to turn it around, they have to have some side railings in order to let the train go by and turn the engine around so it can go the other way. So I think there are some options there as the River Valley County continues to grow like Missoula is growing. Those are very good options to bring people to town without having to have them drive Highway ninety-three.
Now for our fourth question.
As County Commissioner, how would you address the problem of urban and rural sprawl throughout Missoula County?
Ms. Curtis?
Well, we can encourage development close to town and where the infrastructure is, but this is a large county, and there are people who choose to live further out in the county because they want to have a horse and a dog and chickens and whatever, or they just like the school district or whatever. So we can't stop growth, but we need to plan for it. So we do want to have some, the zoning and that kind of thing in place so that we know that certain areas may stay larger and there may be some subdivisions. I know the French Town area is one that seems to be growing. Their school district is growing while ours is declining. There are some areas in Clinton right now that want to put in some different kinds of housing, and some of the housing isn't for families, it's for the people who are of retirement age. And so that's a whole different option that we need to look at, and those people probably don't need to run to town quite as often as when you're chasing kids to a soccer game. So the key is to plan ahead so that the zoning is there, so that every time a project comes forward, we don't have to sit down and go through everything again.
Mr. Farrell?
Well, the question makes the implication that urban sprawl is bad. I'm not sure in Montana, we're an urban state. We're a rural state. I'm not sure of what the question is implying by urban sprawl. If you look around Missoula compared to twenty years ago, I would say that we have sprawl, but it's been necessary sprawl because there's only certain areas that you can build in in the Missoula Valley. There's areas that are in the flood plain, there's areas that are on hillsides that's too steep, so I, in this case, I'm not sure we're talking about something that's bad. You have to move people outside of certain areas. Either that or you're going to build high-rises and dormitories in town in the areas that are already developed in it. Yeah, and I don't think Missoula's ready for that. So planning, absolutely. We need to plan. We've got to have the infrastructure in place so that we can plan for where houses are going to be built. That's something for the professionals to advise the county commissioners is what they see for the next twenty years for Missoula County. Where are we going to grow? Where can we grow, and what do we need in place to do that? Roads, streets, sewer, fire protection, police departments, sheriff's departments, all of that has to be planned for. And I think that's what we need to do a better job of as county commissioners, is getting the professionals involved in it and tell us where they're planning on, where they see development happening in Missoula County.
And now our fifth question.
Do you support the removal of Milltown Dam? If not, what measures would you support to deal with the toxic heavy metals that have built up behind the dam?
Is it my turn?
Mr. Farrell?
Okay, I couldn't remember. I really don't know. I've talked to the EPA, I'm talking, I've had a visit with Peter Nielsen. I don't think we have came to a full conclusion as to whether we want to remove that dam because when we issued the statement, when the county commissioners issued the statement that there, that they wanted the dam removed, at that time, I don't think they realized that there's no money available from the EPA Superfund for remediation of the river. So who's going to pay for it? The EPA told us out there that night, they're not sure they have the authority to force a SARCO and Anaconda Company and all those past people. They're not sure it's in their authority to remediate the river. Their only concern is removing the heavy metals and what's there and stabilizing that project, keeping it so that it doesn't worsen down the river. I really don't have enough information. I don't think the EPA's made that decision yet. I think we need to stop, and under their opinion, they have, the EPA's opinion, they have solved the problem by putting a water system in so that people's wells are not contaminated now. I don't think that's an answer. I think we have to do something out there, but I don't know what we do with the waste if we remove it, and quite frankly, our people at our health department don't, have not made a real decision whether they should remove it or whether it should be left there and what we should do with it.
Ms. Curtis?
There's definitely a problem with all the stuff behind the dam, and the year that we had the big floods showed us that because the ice scoured the stuff loose and you could watch the black stuff come over the top of that dam when they had to let the water go quickly. So it does need to be dealt with. I'm glad that we have groups here that keep hounding FERC and EPA to work on that. There's a question of the stability of the dam, so therefore, that would be a factor in deciding whether it needs to be removed. The dam isn't, it was a log dam that was built in nineteen oh seven or nineteen oh eight and then covered with concrete later, so it's not real stable. So they're going to have to make it more stable if they leave it there. There's also the question of the fish, the bull trout that can't get upstream because of that, and so that's also another concern. One of the things that we have to keep in mind, though, is the economic impact that it will have on Bonner. They actually get money from that dam being a operating dam, even though it doesn't generate hardly any electricity. So we need to address Bonner's concerns in that way. In a dream world, I would hope that we could clean the river and take the dam out so that the fish could get where they belong, but the river is contaminated all the way back to Butte, so we also have to deal with whether or not we get those metals out. Otherwise, they're going to end up at Knoxon, which is the next dam.
And now for question number six.
If elected, how would you address the noxious weed situation in Missoula County?
Ms. Curtis?
Well, thankfully, the voters passed the mill levy in June that gives us about three times as much money as we've had to address the weed issue. Unfortunately, Missoula County let this go for so long that it's going to take a while to get a handle on it. I think that the county and the city need to model taking care of their own land. It says in the state law that owners are, landowners are responsible for noxious weeds on their property. Unfortunately, we usually don't enforce that unless somebody, somebody's neighbor complains. But the city and the county also have pieces of property that have weeds on them, so we need to take care of our own. Part of the money from that will be for education, and there are plans for using things besides spray. There are integrated plans already been discussed so that people could use a variety of choices. Maybe we need to have and adopt a weed patch thing like we do the highway or something, but we do need to be much more aggressive and encourage or enforce the law that says that people need to take care of the weeds on their land.
Mr. Farrell?
Well, I agree. I think that we need to be innovative about how we do this. There are areas where we don't want to pollute water with sprays. There are areas where chemicals, the smell of chemicals may interfere with people that are trying to breathe. In those areas, there are such things as, maybe you people are aware, they had sheep on a patch on Mount Sentinel, or trying to figure out whether they would kill the weeds. I talked to a man the other day that has figured out that goats in certain areas will control leafy spurge and napweed. There's all kinds of biotech technology that's being looked at right now at killing weeds, and I think with the passage of the mill levy that the county should start, and the Weed Control District is looking at implementing all kinds of varieties of ways of controlling weeds. The main thing is the county has to get proactive and get something going and get it started so that we start controlling, at least slow down the growth. We haven't done a thing for the last five or ten years as far as weed control goes. Now maybe we have the money that we can, we can get some of those programs going, we have a weed district, and we have a board that's getting started at it.
Now for our seventh question.
Do you believe that county funds should be used to support business through tax breaks, industrial revenue bonds, and other subsidies without any explicit expectations in return? And as a second part of this question, if you believe that the county should establish clear expectations in return for assistance, what expectations should be established?
Mr. Farrell?
Well, I've stated all along that I'm not a real advocate for the county giving large tax breaks or tax incentives to attract business into Missoula that if those incentives are not available for the people that are already here. Businesses that are in Missoula that need, like the redevelopment agency in downtown Missoula, those kinds of things allow those businesses to make improvements and to grow without having to pay the increased cost of the property taxes until they have paid for the improvements. Those incentives, I think, for businesses that are already in Missoula County are great. If we can help a business grow by allowing them to build their building and hire new people and export more of our products, then Missoula County should be proactive that way. If that benefits somebody that wants to come to Missoula County, then that's more power to them. I have no problems with them taking advantage of those. I'm not sure that I know what expectation. I want them to hire Missoula County people. I want them to pay decent wages when they're here. I don't have any control over that. I want them to make sure that those folks buy houses here. That's kind of what my expectations are, that they employ the people in Missoula County and that they become a good neighbor and support the community.
Ms. Curtis?
The, I don't, I also don't think that we should give, pay businesses to come here like they did in Kalispell and like they've done in Butte, dangling carrots to... like they did in Kalispell and like they've done in Butte. Dangling carrots to, to bring people in. For one thing, Missoula County's budget doesn't have the money to do that at the moment. Tax increment districts, there's a difference between the city and the county ones. The ones in the city, of course, we have, we have two and a new one proposed that can help. They, they have to say that the area is blighted and they can then help, help businesses, buildings to meet code and do improvements and all those kinds of things. The county has a tax increment district. It's the development park out beside, near the airport. And what that allows us to do is as, as the taxes are paid into that fund, the businesses that come there pay taxes into the fund and then it helps us to build the continued infrastructure that's out there. And that helps pay for it without putting anybody out that money. And then once the, the park is all developed, that money goes back in the tax base. Because I don't believe that we should pay businesses to come here, I wouldn't have any expectations of them.
Now for our eighth question.
If elected, would you support a childcare program for the children of county boys?
Ms. Curtis?
Those types of programs have been done for, in a lot of different areas. And it, the statistics show that when you have, are you talking about an onsite childcare program or somewhere closer or something like that?
Either.
That when parents don't have to worry about childcare, that they do a better job. And I think that it's, you know, you'd have to look at facilities and all of that kind of thing, but I think that it's a good thing to offer businesses. Again, we would be modeling what, what other businesses could do.
Mr. Farrell?
Some of the most successful businesses in the country right now have offered those programs as a, as an incentive for their employees to come to work for them. I know we have tight times and tight budgets, but if you want to hire good people, you're going to have to offer the same incentives that private businesses. If we can do that without busting the budget, if we have a building or we have a spot that's available and we can hire a private operation, remember, I'm one that's for private enterprise. If somebody wants to come in and we can give them one of those tax incentives that you're talking about, either use of a county office or use of a county building or, or something that we can provide and they can provide that service, then yes, I, I'd be more than willing to, to work on, on that kind of a proposal for county employees. Because I'm looking for the best people that I can get to work for the county to provide the services for the people in Missoula County.
Now for our ninth question.
Do you support a proposal to set aside funds to buy developmental rights, development rights to keep agriculture and ranching lands in use?
Mr. Farrell?
I guess, are you talking about the county setting aside funds? I, I'm not sure I understand the question. Can you clarify or?
County, county funds.
Well, I'm not sure the county has extra funds right now to set aside that kind of land, quite frankly. I think, I think you're talking about the open space issue maybe for the city, and that's a city issue. The county tried to run that and it didn't pass. The county's short on money already and, and, and the reserve funds are down for the county. So I guess if you looked at the dream world and said, yes, we need to maintain that and, and we have lots of money, I don't have a problem with, with doing that. But right now, if elected, I, I don't foresee that in the next six years in my term if, if elected. I, I just, I would support it if I could find enough money, but I don't see that there's that much money. And I, I would guess that we probably won't be able to do it.
Ms. Curtis?
Well, that's a, a new way of taking care of, making sure that we have agricultural land. If you look around our county, there's plenty of agricultural land that's become weeds because we aren't taking care of it. I'm, I know that it's something that is being discussed in the state. I don't know a lot about it and how we would do it, but I, I think it's an interesting thing to look at. And if there was money, I think it would be a good thing to do.
And now for our final question.
What is the most pressing environmental issue facing Missoula County? And if elected, how would you address this problem?
Ms. Curtis?
Well, I think the superfund sites are probably the most pressing. And one that doesn't get a lot of, a lot of press is the White Pine and Sash superfund site, which is where the, the White Pine lumber mill used to be. Yeah, I happen to live close to that one and, and know people who've worked there for many years. And unfortunately, when the EPA looks at those kinds of things, their job is to figure out how to make, how to get the land back. They don't, they don't necessarily worry about the people. And they haven't done a good job of trying to find out. They've done things with modules there. If you weigh 150 pounds and you drank water from the wells there for six years, you would have such and such a chance of being sick. But a lot of the women who worked in that mill have cancer or have had some form of cancer. So I see that as a, as a concern. I think that the state needs to get more active. I would hope that we could get a more assertive director of our environmental program at the state level. And, and also the Milltown Dam, those, the, we need to get those heavy metals out of there. The, the water quality, we sit on this huge aquifer and, and that is going to affect all of us.
Mr. Farrell?
Well, certainly all of those that, that Ms. Curtis talked about are important, but those are kind of out of control of county commissioners. And I would assume that the question that you ask is some, is an environmental issue that a county commissioner can, can work on and possibly solve. And I think the, the next important question for county commissioners is extending the sewer district, making some kind of a workable agreement so that we protect the Missoula aquifer. Now, I've, I've always said that, that nobody wants to drink dirty water. Nobody wants to breathe bad air. So Missoula County commissioners can affect by negotiating with the city contracted services or whatever we have to do to see to it that we protect the, the, the aquifer, our drinking water for Missoula County and for the city of Missoula. And, and that's an area where county commissioners can exact some control. The superfund site, that's federal and that's state. The White Pine and Sash, we're, we're studying, we've done studies. And, and once again, that's back to the state and federal. They're very important. They're also part of the Missoula aquifer, but unless we as county commissioners want to step in and assume that cleanup, there's not much we can do. But drinking water and Missoula aquifer, that's something the county can do. And, and I think that's the issue that, that we need to be, we need to negotiate with the city and, and get contracts for service and, and get some of these planned subdivisions already sewered.
Each candidate may now make a three-minute closing statement. We will hear first from you, Mr. Farrell.
Well, all through this campaign, I've talked about economic development and I've talked about my experience as business and, and just the experience that I've had of living in Missoula County since the, the late 60s and the, and the early 70s. And I want to see Missoula remain the, the last best place of the last best place, if you will. It's a great place to, to live and, and raise a family. I've did it, Jean's did it, most of, all of you have done it. Some of your students and are just learning about how great Missoula is. But our job is to maintain that. Our job is to provide jobs for the citizens of Missoula County. It's, it's to go out and promote the economics. It's to attract businesses like international banks. The, the Montana State Legislature changed the law so we can have Swiss-style banking here. If I could just attract one of those banks and solve a lot of our money problems. They're high-paying jobs. They provide a tax base that will help solve the problems of the county and, and create higher paying jobs so that the employers that are in Missoula will, will have, have to pay more money to keep their employees. Those are things that county commissioners can do and should do. And, and, and we need to develop a relationship with people that, that will bring those kinds of businesses or businesses that are already here that will promote those kinds of, of growth in Missoula County. Under I-105, we're under some great restraints. The framers of that thought that these problems would all be solved, and they have solved them for the schools and, and some other entities, but they've left the counties to where economic development's basically the only way we can increase our services. So that's the number one issue for me. That's what we have to do to increase the county coffers and to put reserve funds back into the, the funds that we need and to hire the deputies and to hire the firemen and to, to provide the services, plow the roads and do all the things that the county is mandated by state law to do. Because when they, when they put us under the freeze, they didn't say, well, you, you don't have to do these. They said, we still have to ma, do the things that state law requires us to do. And that's what I think I bring is, is an understanding of how that has to work.
Thank you, Mr. Farrell. Ms. Curtis?
For the past 20 years, I've been an advocate of families and youth across the state and in Washington DC as well as here locally. I've addressed public issues from the grassroots up. I'm a trained facilitator for advocacy training, building successful partnerships, and I'm passionate about involving the public in making decisions. I know that Mr. Farrell feels that his business experience outweighs my business experience, but I also have a lot of volunteer experience for nonprofits. I was the state, the administrator and the president of the largest nonprofit in the state, the Montana PTA. Through that, I developed a lot of leadership skills that I feel will be of benefit to this county. The things that I want to work on would be to make government work for the people by respecting that taxpayer's checkbook with sound fiscal management. I would value the self-respect and dignity of all people, and that means that, that we need to work to help people be able to have high-paying jobs and to have houses that they can afford and be able to access healthcare and the, the services that they need. We would also need a partnership with agencies. The county does that to some degree now, but I think there are other ways that we can do that. We need to have strong partnerships that allow us to leverage dollars, put our money together, put our heads together and provide services in that way. We also need to plan for growth to protect and enhance our quality of life here. I'm experienced at bringing people together on issues that have differing opinions and being respectful of those differing opinions and finding solutions. I also not only ask for input, but if I don't get input that I feel would be there, I would go out and look for it. I'm able to focus on issues and not personalities. As Mr. Farrell said, the county has had some problems with board members having personality differences that made them focus on that rather than the work of the county. I'll, I would always remember my fiduciary responsibility to the people. And that not only means money. Fiduciary responsibility means that I would have the interests of the people of the county in mind whenever I made a decision. I'm experienced at developing private-public partnerships. As the state PTA president, I did that on many occasions where you have to, you know that you don't have enough money to provide, bring in a speaker, so you have to get together and find other people that could benefit from that too. And I'm experienced at that. And even though you can't solve some of the environmental problems, one of the things that county commissioners do have the power to do is to use the bully pulpit. You can, you can bring it to the forefront. You can talk about it. You can make people look at the issue. We also need to be proactive in the legislature and I'm experienced at that. I was a lobbyist there for several years. So, thank you.
Thank, excuse me. Thank you both for your thoughtful responses. This concludes the 2000 Missoula County Commissioner Candidates Forum. I'd like to thank our candidates for participating in this voter education pro, program. On behalf of this evening's sponsors, the Missoula League of Women Voters and Youth Vote 2000, I'd like to encourage everyone to get informed about these candidates and the issues facing Missoula County. Thank you, good night, and remember to vote on November 7th.
Thank you.